All right, it is 7:00 PM. We'll get the work session started. Before we do that, though, we have a few interviews. It looks like we have Thomas Daniels looking for reappointment to the zoning board of review. Thomas, welcome. Thank you for coming. And if you could, tell us a little bit about yourself and your experiences with the zoning board of review.
Sure. Been a member of the board for four years. Currently Vice Chairman. I don't know if you have my resume in front of you from when I first appeared here? I spent 15 years adjudicating and hearing thousands of cases at the board of review for the state of Rhode Island. And I think that's gave me a large advantage in fact-finding and in decision-making. And I think I brought that forward to the zoning board. So I'll answer any questions you may have.
Excellent, Thomas. Any specific questions?
Anything unexpected? Any challenges in the last two years?
Any what? I'm sorry?
Unexpected challenges that you've faced in the role?
No, not really. You know, I mean, our job is to listen to the facts and evaluate the applications and apply the law and decide whether someone needs a variance or whether they should have a special use permit based on what's in the ordinances that you -- you're the policy makers, so you make the ordinances. And we interpret them for folks that need those variances or special use permits. So the only comment I would have is we need some more people. We have one alternate. I know you extended the alternate to three alternates. And it would be nice to have them because there are people that -- members that can't be there or -- I've attended every one of the meetings that has been scheduled since I was appointed. But some people have valid reasons for not being there or for recusal. So it's important to get those positions filled. I appreciate you doing that. I know it's hard to find people to serve on boards and commissions. I get that. So.
Thank you, and thank you for serving.
Anything else? Thank you, Thomas. We appreciate your service and we appreciate your willingness to continue on this board. Experience is definitely valued, in particular on this board. So we appreciate your willingness to continue. But that'll sort of wrap up our interview, and we should have a decision by tonight.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Kevin Diamond, who can be appointed to the zoning board of review.
Hi. Good evening. Thanks for having me. So a little bit about me. I recently moved to South Kingstown about a year, year and a half ago from Providence. I was there for a year in -- from North Carolina before that. My wife's a professor at the University of Rhode Island, which is what caused our relocation to Rhode Island. I'm an architect in Providence. I'm the principal at the Providence Architecture Company, principal and co-founder. Just a bit about myself. I went to college for construction management and minored in town, city, and regional planning. And after working for a construction company for a couple of years, I went back to graduate school and got my master's degree in architecture. And I've worked with several real estate developers, architecture companies, construction firms, and the like, and before starting my own company with my business partner. The reason I'm here today is I've been very interested in getting more involved in South Kingstown, specifically here in Wakefield, but really everywhere. I live right off of -- a little side street off of Columbia Street, and I'll be raising my family there. And I would like to be involved with helping make South Kingstown as great as it could be and being a resource, a civic resource for those who, you know, want to do their own development projects or residents that want to, you know, improve the place they call home and help them sort of decipher and shepherd folks through the process. It can be really confusing and onerous for folks who don't do this every day. And I would love to be able to be a resource and help in my, you know, give my interpretation of the ordinance, understand, you know, how a project might conform or not and what the best course of action might be. So I'm not sure if that answers your questions or not.
Excellent, Kevin. Thank you. Any further questions for Kevin?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. Next, we have John McGinn.
Good evening.
Now, John, I see that you've applied for a number of committees here. Conservation Commission, Economic Development Committee, Historic District Commission, Route One Stewardship Development Plan Committee, and the zoning board of review.
Right. I understand that Historic Commission's been filled, and you have to be a business owner for the Route One Committee, so it's down to three committees. So I'm happy to serve in any one if it's your pleasure for me to do so. The Economic Development Committee, Conservation, or Zoning. We just listened to two very good candidates for Zoning, that's for sure, right? So I worked at the Convention Center for the last 30 years as a Senior Director of Sales and Event Services. I retired back in June, and a little over a year ago, I married the love of my life, and she lives in Wakefield. We live in a Tower Hill Heights section of Wakefield, and we love it here. And it was great from June to December with the boat and golfing. But now I need to -- I want to engage myself a little bit in the community, and I live here in South Kingstown. I expect to stay here permanently. So anything that I can do to use my sales leadership experience to help, I think with economic development, my 35 years of sales leadership positions might be useful there. Conservation Commission, I grew up on Narragansett Bay. I'm a lifelong boater. At high tide, I go to Narrow River on my boat, and at low tide, I get corhogs out of Salt Pond. So -- and then, you know, zoning board, if you need me there, fine, but it sounds like you have two good candidates for that. I currently have my real estate license with RE/MAX Flagship in Narragansett, so I'm practicing real estate. That's pretty much me.
Excellent, John. Thank you. I do want to ask you, you kind of went through three of them. Is your preference the EDC? Is that number one? Number two, Conservation Commission?
Yeah, EDC was number one. Zoning was number two, and Conservation was number three, but wherever you could use me.
So I think possibly the Economic Development Commission might be a good one because they're doing a park that might merge your interest in conservation.
Awesome.
Commission work. The Sagatucket Park, which is down the end of High Street.
Right.
We're going to renovate the park, restore it to its grandeur from the early 1900s, and then also work on the river part, and it's also part of this economic engine. So I think that might be a merger of a couple of different things, and if you stay on the EDC, that might work out.
That sounds terrific. Thank you.
You are even allowed to serve on multiple boards if you're a real glutton for punishment.
The only limitation I have is Thursday nights, I have dinner at my sister's house in North Providence. So if she's willing to cook dinner, I'm willing to go up. So that's the only limitation I have. I'm happy to serve on a second committee if it'd like me to, as long as it didn't involve Thursday nights.
Gotcha.
One of them might meet on Thursdays.
Yeah, so maybe that wouldn't work for me.
What night is Conservation Commission, Dory?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Sign them up.
We'll let you know. Okay. Thank you for your willingness. Appreciate it. All right, we've completed our interviews at this point. We'll turn it over to you, Terry. Go through the agenda.
Good evening. Yes, so we will start with, let's see, licenses. There's really no surprises here, except for the very first one, Item A, which is the Courthouse Center for the Arts. There's also a public hearing there for a Class T liquor license. We still do not have the information relative to this particular application. At last meeting, the council discussed this meeting being kind of the trigger meeting to either remove it from the agenda, and then the applicant would have to just reapply at this point. And Mike, you can certainly speak to it.
To pass the item off the agenda, and when they have all their required certificates, et cetera, they can come back and reapply.
Have they been continuing to have the events that they're listing?
All right, it's just a matter of not having the liquor license.
So she did communicate with me on the 28th of April, but she thought she was -- 28th of February, sorry. She said she was going to attempt it on her own. She knows what she -- so it's just what it is.
So Mike, as far as a vote when we get to that item, what would sort of the vote or the motion be? To remove it from the agenda subsequently, or?
No, I -- the motion would be to pass it off the agenda. Don't either reject or approve, just pass it off the agenda, and then it'll come back.
So does she have to file a new license and, like, reapply so it's an expense on her part?
She would have to begin to.
She's got some expenses to pay. Say that again. Yep.
Taxation responding to me, but they were still waiting for documents from her that they can operate.
Okay.
I just have one question. License application, 6A, not the liquor license, but 6A is granting theater and dance licenses, right? So that's separate from the liquor license. So can we grant them the theater license so they could operate the theater and dance?
You -- all the paperwork's in on the theater license, correct? Or no?
They've got a fee to pay, but we can work with.
We could make a condition of approval of that particular license, a condition that the fee be paid.
We can approve 6A and then just remove the public hearing portion of it, the liquor license?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We do have a couple of other licenses here. One is a victualling license for Cantina Del Rio. They are also on for -- order a public hearing for a transfer of a liquor license. We expect the applicant to be here. Items C and D are both special event licenses. Again, both applicants should be present. Item C is a renewal for the National MS Society Bike MS event in June, and Item D is a license for the Never Done Foundation, which is, they're holding a car parade, that a portion of it will go through South Kingstown. And again, they should be here this evening, should the council have any questions in that regard. We have a Class F 19-hour beverage license from application for the Harrah Gallery, and that is similar to the URI licenses that have been issued over the last couple of months. That's Item E. Moving on to public hearings, we discussed public hearing Item A, unless the council has any questions on that. And then Item B for a public hearing is the transfer of a Class B victualler liquor license, and that is Cantina Del Rio from one member to another. So again, they should be here this evening if there are any questions related to that particular request for a transfer of the liquor license. Under communications, if there are no questions on any of the consent agenda items, I will move to Item E, which are two resolutions from the Barrington Town Council. One related to lifting the restrictions on -- the state restrictions on the limit of how much solar energy residents are allowed to generate. The resolution proposes removing the capacity limits, and certainly up to the council on how they wish to -- what they wish to do with that. You could consider referring it to the sustainability if you'd like, or whatever the council chooses. And then the other one is related to legislation to create Rhode Island Broadband Development Program. And essentially, that would allow for a statewide broadband program. It has -- it would hire a coordinator at the state level for the -- to lead the broadband council, and it would allow the state to request funding for broadband technology opportunities. Apparently, Rhode Island is one of two states that does not have this type of coordinator. The council, there would be an 11-member council, and they'd be represented from both the public and private sector and fall under the supervision of Rhode Island Commerce. So the Barrington resolution is to support that. Currently, the town utilizes Verizon and Cox for broadband. We, according to our IT director, we have sufficient coverage. We don't have a high level of need for additional broadband, but it's certainly up to the council how they wish to proceed in that regard. Next, we have a -- is that Item F?
F.
F, Item F. The letter from David Flanders, the chairman of the Conservation Commission, requesting that the town council consider banning the nip bottles in town as part of the plastic reduction ordinance. So currently, Mike has some information on that in terms of the legislation that is at the state level with that regard. And I might suggest that the council may wish to also seek some advisory from the EDC in terms of what the impact would be on the business community if this were something that the council were to consider. Mike, do you want to?
Yeah, I agree with Terry's advice here. I think you definitely should send it on to the EDC to get some more feedback. Also, it's our opinion that we would not be able to, as a town, ban these nip bottles. It's one of statewide presence, and there's a preemption issue, which is why there's legislation or a bill actually pending the General Assembly. So -- but in the meantime, if you want to refer it to the EDC, you could certainly do that, or you could -- or we could wait and see what happens with the state legislation.
If there are no questions, Item G is an email from Caterie Collins concerning the School Resource Officer Program. I will report that we did send Ms. Collins a copy of the School Resource Officer MOU between the school department and the police department. That is currently on file. She has that. She did thank me for sending that to her. With regard to the particular incident that she's referring to in her email, at this time, it's really not something that we can comment on, unless the council has any further questions. Item H is an email from William Boardman requesting congratulations to Sophia Boardman for being the first female to attain Eagle Scout Award, which is quite something. So we're happy for that, so the council can decide what they'd like to do there. Item I is a resolution from the Middletown Town Council in support of ARPA proposals for municipal learning centers in Article I, Section 16 of the Governor's Proposed Budget. Middletown is one of five communities that has been identified for ARPA funding related to this particular item in the Governor's Budget. The council can decide what they'd like to do with that. South Kingstown is not involved to that degree for that particular program. Item J is a resolution from the Wunsoket City Council in opposition to Senate Bill 2244 and House Bill 7198, an act relating to labor and labor relations, municipal employees' arbitration. That particular resolution is in opposition to the legislation that's currently at the state level, and let me pull some information on that. That essentially would support binding arbitration in order to establish monetary and financial decisions for contractual bargaining units. And the city of Wunsoket is essentially saying they're opposed to that. The Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns did provide testimony at the state level, also indicating opposition to this particular legislation because it essentially takes the power of the local town councils to be able to enact and support the contracts for the bargaining units within the municipalities. I would, you know, almost every town and city is a member of the League of Cities and Towns, and I would agree that this is not something that the town would want to see We can move on to the town solicitors' report. Mike will provide an update as to the town manager search during his report. Under new business, we have Girl Scout Week, a resolution recognizing Girl Scout Week, and council president, I think you were mentioning that you might bring that up to the start of the meeting. Item B is the adoption of the Town Beach Policy for the 2022 season. As the council may note, there are no changes to any of the fees for the Town Beach, with the exception of the storage units, which is simply because the fee for the season pass has been removed out of the package, so it's simply just for the storage unit. Otherwise, the policy remains the same. There is some language that remains in there related to COVID-19 because we just don't know. So we are trying to allow some flexibility if there needs to be any amendments throughout the course of the summer season. Does anybody have any questions on?
So the beach passes typically sell out, correct? Last year, they did.
They did not sell out last year, no. 2020, we actually opened it up after they sold out because there was a minimum -- in an abundance of caution, the Recreation Commission and the department had kind of put a cap on it to see where that was going to go and how much social distancing was required at the beach in terms of COVID.
So there's no.
So there's no cap on beach passes for resident or non-resident. Item D is an award to South County Umpires Association for umpiring services. You may recall, at the last meeting, there was an award that was for refereeing services, different contract, same vendor. There are no questions there. We can move on to Item E, and that is a resolution that will authorize me to sign a grant agreement with an Narragansett Bay estuary program, and this is related to the Green Hill Pond watershed. John Shock has provided a memo that details that particular program. And of course, we're always hoping to get grant funding, so this is a good partnership. If the council has questions, John's here to address them. Item F is another resolution extending the declaration of emergency. And again, that's simply because the state is still in a declaration of emergency, and it's really more for a funding, you know, allowing the town to seek funding, federal funding, if necessary in the future. Item G is a resolution for -- excuse me, a contract for building and management systems with regard to HVAC operations at the Public Safety Complex, and our facility superintendent is here. Should there be any questions on that item? Excuse me, I have to try through. And then Item H is a resolution for an order of notice related to zoning map and text amendments for government institutions. That has to do with South County Hospital in terms of how they are able to proceed with improvements on their property and in relation to their master plan requirements. So the zoning text has been proposed for amendment. The public -- the planning board has supported that and presented it to the council with findings of fact, and we're looking for a resolution to hold a public hearing on that, on both of those, the map amendment and the text amendment. And that brings me to the end of the agenda, unless there are any questions.
Terry. Any questions for Terry? At this point, we'll take a five-minute recess before we begin the meeting. Good evening. Welcome to Town Hall. It is Monday, March 14th, about 7:30 PM for the Town Council regular scheduled meeting. First item of business is the Pledge of the Flag. We do have the Girl Scouts in attendance. If you all could come up, we'd like to have you lead us in the pledge. We have something for you as well. Fine job by all of you. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have the Land Acknowledgement Statement, which I will read. The town of South Kingston pays homage to the indigenous people and land on which the town is now located. Let this acknowledgement serve as a reminder of our ongoing efforts to recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with an Narragansett tribe whose land and water we benefit from today. Next, we have the Roll Call. If you could, Susan.
Council President McIntyre.
Here.
Council Vice President Collins.
Here.
Councilwoman Bergner.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
It is noted that Councilwoman Rose is absent this evening.
Thank you, Susan. At this point, we will move down to New Business, item 13A, which is a resolution adopting a proclamation recognizing Girl Scout Week as follows. Girl Scout Week, March 6th through March 12th, 2022, whereas Saturday, March 12th, 2022, marks the 110th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the United States of America founded by Juliette Gordon Lowe in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas through Girl Scouting, girls grow in courage, confidence, and character, and learn to make the world a better place. And whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouts, the preeminent organization for girls, has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of character, conduct, and patriotism. And whereas Girl Scouting takes an active role in increasing the interest and skill levels of today's youth in math, science, and technology careers, and to fulfill our country's economic needs. And whereas through participation in Project Undercover, a council-wide community service project, every girl will learn that she can make a change for the better in her community. And whereas the Girl Scout Cookie Sale is the world's largest girl-led business, teaching financial literacy to girls of all ages. Whereas the Girl Scouts of Southeastern New England, which serves 12,000 girls in the Rhode Island area, will be celebrating 110 years of an American tradition with more than 2.5 million current Girl Scout members nationwide. Now, therefore, we, the Town Council, the town of South Kingston, do hereby proclaim the week of March 6th through the 12th of 2022 as Girl Scout Week, and the town of South Kingston enrage our citizens to support Girl Scouts and their endeavors.
Motion to approve 13A. Need to approve it. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I, I made the motion. Just need a second.
I didn't hear.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. Congratulations, girls, and I have a resolution to hand you all. Thank you so much.
Oh.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
My favorites.
Thank you.
We got the new ones. I only have Thin Mints at home. Thank you.
All right, next, we will move to licenses. 6A, we have a resolution continued from December 13th, 2021. Oh, that's right, yep. Item four, approval of minutes of previous meetings.
Motion to approve items four, A, B, and C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Next, we have the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
There's just one that I wanted to, on the communication items, to come up.
We have a motion and a second. Now, we're under discussion. Which one, Deb?
Um, the one, I'm sorry, B, item B, about the resolution from the Barrowville Town Council regarding the zoning ordinance change, the one that's the single-family zoning prohibition in towns over 20,000.
Is that the one that we referred last time?
Mm-hmm.
Should we wait for response from the?
Planning Board, that's where we sent it. Want to talk about it?
That's what I was looking for, is just an update. So, that's what I wanted to talk about.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Whoever made the motion want to amend it to include this?
We can just ask the Town Manager during the Manager's Report. I don't know that.
Terry, maybe we could get an update at the Town Manager's Report relative to Communication 8B on how the Planning Board is seeing this?
Uh, sure. Yeah, no, I understand. Yes, I can give you what I know.
All right, any more? We do have a motion. We have a second. Any more discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. That brings us to 6A, which is a resolution continued from December 13th, 2021, January 10, February 14, and February 28, 2022, granting theater and dance licenses to South County Center for the Arts, doing business as Courthouse Center for the Arts of Kingston Road, West Kingston, application by Marian Almonte. Marian, I see you are here, if you want to come up on this at all. As, as far as this one, we, we are considering approving this, but holding off on the public hearing item. So, if you do want to speak on this at all.
When I went to finish it all today, there was a lot more involved in it than I thought. So, everybody has their emails and things, and I just have to get some figures together. And we're still, as it stands, overpaid on our taxes, so we don't owe any. And that's it. We should be able to get the letter of good standing, but yeah, there's, there's a lot to do with it, and I didn't realize it was that much. Normally, it was done by.
So, this one is for the vicualling license. Whereas the next item, which is the public hearing, is, is related to the, the things you're talking about now.
Okay.
This is us granting a theater and dance license.
Oh. So, this is the liquor license, then?
This is not the liquor license we're hearing right now. We're discussing your theater and dance licenses.
Oh, okay.
This allows the events to keep happening without the, the liquor, basically.
Oh, okay.
So, you're on the agenda twice, once for the events happening, and then the second part of the agenda is, would be for the liquor license. So, were you just?
Oh, all right. I didn't realize that. That's okay.
Make a motion to approve 6A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
And I have a question.
Any discussion?
Were there conditions we need to address here? Mike, you had mentioned that when I asked the question during the work session.
All right, I think if you just made the motion subject to compliance with all necessary conditions of approval, that would be fine. That, that would include the filing fee and whatever paperwork needs to be filed.
I'll amend my motion to.
That's all done, though. All those have been approved already through your system, through the portal.
Right, I think it's just a.
For the liquor license, that's.
Yeah, I think it's just a filing fee we're looking for on the theater and.
I went in today, and there was nothing there that was owed. It was all checked off, done. Oh. I have to file again through that portal, or?
It's not a simple process.
But it doesn't allow me to do that. Okay.
Because your liquor license isn't yet.
Right, but, and I, and I know this is somewhat confusing, so there are two sets of licenses, right? There's the theater and dance license, which allows you to put on your events.
Okay.
And that's one license. Second license, which we are going to get to shortly, is the liquor license, which, of course, allows you to serve alcohol at those events.
Okay.
You can put on your performances without alcohol, obviously.
Mm-hmm.
That's why they're too separate.
Okay.
There, there is a renewal fee that's due for the theater and dance license, which I'm sure tomorrow you can straighten out with the clerk's office. It's just a matter of writing a check.
Oh, you want me to just bring in a check instead of doing the paperwork through the portal?
Well, isn't the paperwork through the portal tied to the liquor license?
Yeah, so I still have to go through the portal to do it all. Okay.
So, can, just, the motion is to approve it subject to any conditions from the clerk's office? Okay. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any more discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. That brings us to the next item here. Marian.
Okay.
Your next item will come up in a bit.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we go to 6B, which is a resolution granting a vicualling license to Cantina Del Rio LLC, doing business as Cantina Del Rio of Kingston Road, Wakefield, application by Jose Antonio Centillan Corona.
Hello, David.
Welcome.
Yep.
So, right now, we're just considering your application for a vicualling license. So, if you just want to sort of tell us a little bit about the business.
Well, we started this business loan, uh, two years ago. We started Ramon, and I started since the beginning. Uh, this is the second business we start. We started in Warwick. So, then later on, we decided to split. So, we say, okay, Ramon, you kept Warwick, and I kept South Kingston. That's why the process we're doing is, is moving. But everything is, I've been since the beginning, and now we just transferring and taking Ramon, because that was Ramon's name, into the license. So, that's the process we, we are doing right now. So, we're happy in the community. We're, we're the second year, and we are good.
Excellent. Business is going good?
Business is going good.
Good to hear. Good to hear. Any questions up there?
Motion to approve item 6B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. We'll have, we'll have you up in a bit for item 7B, so you can take a seat for a little. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to 6C, which is a resolution granting a special events license to the National MS Society of Waltham, Massachusetts, to conduct a portion of the Bike MS Ride the Rhode Island in the town of South Kingston on Saturday, June 11, and Sunday, June 12, 2022, at 7:00 AM, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured in the amount specified by the Finance Director, and approval by the Rhode Island Department of Transportation, application by Emily Rivera, events coordinator.
Hi, I'm actually Maura Bushore, not Emily. I work locally here in, in Warwick, and I'm the development manager for the ride.
Welcome. And go ahead and tell us a bit about this event.
Sure, so this is actually the 35th year that Ride the Road has been happening, and we're looking forward to having our ride back to normal, what we're all used to with a two-day event this year. And we ride out of URI, our riders stay on campus, and riders cover about 150 miles over the two days and help raise funds for the Multiple Scleros Society. This event brings in about $300,000, and we have about 350 riders that support the ride.
Any more questions by the members?
Just a question on where in South Kingston you ride.
Sure. Oh, gosh, you know, I'd, I'd have to look at the map to know exactly where we go through, but on day one, riders leave campus and they head kind of southwest. And if people are riding the full 100-mile route, they actually go into Connecticut, um, Suddington, or Stonington, excuse me, um, Westerly, and then come back up. And then on day two, riders leave campus, go along the shore in Narragansett, up through east, North Kingston, East Greenwich, and then back to campus again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if someone wanted to participate, how would they go about doing that?
Registration's online, bikeMS.org, and then there's a button for Find Your Ride, and Bike MS Ride the Road is, is where you'd find it.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
We hear a motion on 6C.
Motion to approve item 6C.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
That brings us to 6D, which is a resolution granting a special events license to the Never Done Foundation of Narragansett, Rhode Island, to conduct a portion of a car parade in the town of South Kingston on Sunday, May 1, 2022, 11:00 AM, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town and certificates of insurance provided by the participants, application by Regan Dunn. Welcome.
How are you?
Good. Good. Welcome to Town Hall, and feel free to just tell us what this is all about.
So, this event is for my senior project. I'm a senior this year at Narragansett High School, and this event is for a foundation called the Never Done Foundation, which is a foundation that my mom runs to help raise money for glioblastoma brain cancer, and it's a Narragansett-based foundation. And we started it due to, unfortunately, the pass of my dad about almost four years ago to glioblastoma brain cancer to help families who went through what we did. So, for this event, I wanted to not only have to complete it for my senior project, but I wanted to do an event for the foundation, help my mom raise money for that cause.
Excellent. Excellent. Very honorable work.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job with the microphone. It's pretty impressive.
I do quite a bit of public speaking for school as well.
Excellent. Any questions up there?
So, tell us a little bit about the car parade and how we could be supportive or even watch it.
Okay, so, um, I've been, so the car parade, basically, will start at the Elks Lodge, right around the corner from here, and we'll go from the Elks Lodge to 102 on Ministerio to then URI Plains Road Parking, where there will be an after-party with food trucks and a DJ. And all participants who don't, this car parade will be for trucks and Jeeps, but even people who don't drive trucks and Jeeps are welcome to also participate in the after-party for the food trucks and the DJ. for the food trucks and the DJ. And you can register through the Never Done Foundation website. And I also have flyers posted online, and I'll be printing out some and posting them up throughout South Kingston as well.
All right. Thank you. Do I hear a motion here?
Motion.
Just wondered where your shining star is going to college, where you hope to go?
So I'm going to St. Joseph's College of Maine, which is in Sandish, Maine, and I'm going to study nursing.
Oh.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Motion to approve item six D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries and good luck. Should be a great event and congratulations. This is awesome.
Thank you guys so much. Have a good night.
That brings us to six E, which is a resolution granting a Class F 19-hour beverage license to Heret Gallery, an educational foundation for the Winter Bash fundraiser event to be held on Friday, April 1, 2022, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM at, in Wakefield, application by Sanja Chikolsky, gallery director, if you're here? Yeah, go ahead. Come on up.
Donna Gustafson, on the board and the treasurer. And um, it's actually, it's a Friday, April 1st from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the gallery. And it's a fundraiser for the gallery, but also um, in regarding the liquor license, all right, um, DEA, they're raising funds for a scholarship for Johnson and Wales University. And so any proceeds they take in from its local craft beers that they'll be serving. And they have a license to serve and um, it's all legit and so.
Excellent. Any questions?
And you're all invited.
I was going to say, do we get an invite?
Of course. Yes, absolutely.
Sounds like a great event.
Winter Bash, April 1st.
It's actually a spring bash.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know where winter came from, but winter is past.
April 1st is a good April Fool's joke.
It's spring.
Yeah. Make a motion that we pass six E.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Thank you.
It's a good event. All right, that's going to bring us to seven public hearings. Seven A is a public hearing continued from December 13, 2021, January 10, February 14, and February 28, 2022, relative to an application for renewal of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingston in accordance with the general laws of 1956 as amended as follows, follows, Class T legitimate theater liquor license. Application for renewal of a Class T legitimate theater liquor license uh, by South County Center for the Arts, doing business as the Courthouse Center for the Arts of Kingston Road, West Kingston, by Marianne Almonte, executive director for the first and second floor of the building, in accordance with the special use permit granted by the zoning board of review on November 28, 2012, and as further defined in a site plan on filed in the town clerk's office. Said license is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, filing of a certificate of insurance evidencing required liability coverage, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations. Marianne, welcome.
Fire codes all up to date. We do have them coming again this week for something that's in the other building, but not the big building. Um, and then, like I said before, it's just the paperwork that needs to get done with the state. Our taxes are overpaid still as it stands.
So Mike or Silo, do you want to sort of walk us through what we're considering here?
So this matter has been on the agenda from last December, and it's been continued for several months in order to allow you to obtain the necessary certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation. And I know you're standing here this evening telling the council that not only do you not owe taxes, but you're overpaid. So ordinarily, if someone is overpaid with something, there'd be no question or issue at all about the Division of Taxation providing a certificate saying, what that certificate says is that you are in compliance and you've paid all the taxes due. That's, and it's not a local or municipal law. This is a state law.
I know. It's, it's, that's, that's not the issue. So there's a T 204 form that has to be submitted and a T 205 form that has to be submitted, and the numbers have to line up. And I just haven't submitted them because I don't have a bookkeeper to do that for me. Um, there's 32 different pieces of paperwork that I have to submit to the state to get this done. So it's not just that. And I have to do my, I believe, my litter permit or something else. So it's not just the fact that we're overpaid. The other issue is um, we paid one of the taxes in the wrong quarter, so they have to switch it. Well, there's eight different tax people I spoke to that don't know how to switch it. So the one that I did speak to that could needed all this other paperwork to follow it. So when I got into it today to do it all, it was a lot more paperwork than I thought it was.
Right. So what?
And contacted our accountant to get the right numbers to submit on the T 204. Um, so like I said, um, to the councilman earlier, um, I just need the rest of the week to do it. I told my board, you can come in and run the business for the whole week. Can't be interrupted. I need to get this done. If I have to drive to the state house to submit the paperwork, I will. The insurance is a matter of a phone call, but we've been insured for quite some time now.
Sure. So it, it does sound complicated. It sounds like you've got a few more hoops that you've got to get through.
I do.
And my advice to the council this evening is given that there have been so many extensions at this time, that we pass it off the agenda this evening. And then when you do, in fact, have everything straightened out with the state, you come back and reapply for the liquor license.
So start from scratch again.
You would start from scratch, but on the positive side, um, you could just follow the same format that you've done before.
Um, it was all deleted from the system, and I really had to start from scratch.
Right.
That's, that's a lot of work for something that's been in play for, since 1988.
No, I'm talking about simply the application for the liquor license. Not, you don't have to go back to 1988 to do that. It would just be a matter of going back into the portal and applying for a Class T legitimate liquor license. And when you, what I would recommend is you don't even attempt that until you have your certificate in hand.
So you'll refund me all the licensing fees and everything that are already paid upfront that are just waiting for that piece of paper?
So just to be clear, the licensing fees that have been paid have been for prior, correct? Not for, so, so for, you would have to pay for a new liquor license fee because they're paid on an annual basis.
How much is the liquor license fee?
I'm sorry?
How much is the liquor license fee? Because there's only a bill on there for $75 that remains.
It's basically, it's a hundred dollar fee.
Okay.
In that way, rather than you having to keep coming here every two weeks or the council having it on its agenda every two weeks, we'll just put it on when all the paperwork is set. And when you can submit it to Susan in the clerk's office and we can get it back on the agenda for you.
Can you just change the date on the application?
No. No, couldn't do that.
Any questions for Marianne?
Marianne, my husband is happy.
Please have him call me tomorrow.
He talks to them regularly at taxation. He gets certificates of good standing from taxation on a routine basis.
I've never had a problem with it before. It's just the glitch in the system with nobody knowing how to.
I just, I just feel terribly that this has gone on for you. And if he knows Mary or Suzie, whoever it is, and it sort of makes it easier for you, I'd like to try to help you because you contribute a lot to the community.
Thank you.
So I'm going to tell, I'm going to tell him you're going to call tomorrow. I'm also going to give him your number. And if he can expedite it by a day or two, it's going to be helpful to you. That's all.
Thank you.
So just clarification, Mike, is there a, a reason not to continue for another meeting? If, if it looks like she can get this stuff together in two weeks?
You always have the option of continuing it for yet another two weeks if you desire.
My, my concern is, you know, if we go back to the beginning and then we have to place another order for public.
That is correct.
It makes it at least a month long or probably more than that.
I, I don't disagree with that. It's, it's of course up to you as to whether or not you want to continue it again or.
I'd like to continue it. I mean, this is the first time we talked and I think it'll be better. And I'd just like to continue it just one more time, two more weeks. I move that we continue item seven A.
Second.
So a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to clarify, continue it to the next council, regular council meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be the 28th, March 28th.
I'm hopeful for you, Marianne. I think, I hope you have everything by the next meeting.
I will.
We're trying to help you out here, so we think this is the best to accommodate you here.
Thank you.
We have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. We'll see you at the next meeting, Marianne. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to seven B, which is a public hearing relative to an application for transfer of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingston in accordance with the general laws of 1956 as amended as follows, Class B vicular liquor license, transfer of a Class B vicular liquor license from Cantina Del Rio of South Kingston LLC, doing business as Cantina Del Rio of Kingston Road, Wakefield, by Ramon Michael, member, to Cantina Del Rio of South Kingston LLC, doing business as Cantina Del Rio, by Jess, or sorry, Jose Antonio Centillian Corona, member of Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for the first floor dining room and bar area in accordance with the special use permit granted by the zoning board of review on May 19, 2010, and as further defined in a site plan on filed in town clerk's office. Said license is contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, filing a certificate of insurance evidencing required liability coverage, compliance with all town ordinances and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes and user fees and arrears to the town, and the correction of any fire code violations. Uh, Jose, I know you're here. You were here earlier. Uh, at this point, we're going to hopefully have you talk more on, on this license transfer. So if you could come up to the microphone.
Well, we have pretty much.
And if you could, could you speak into the microphone?
What the requirements are for the certificate of good standing, we have that in place and also we have the insurance in place. So after that, so we've got to take the community out of the hard times we went through for the pandemias and all that stuff. So we want to keep doing our work and keep working. And it's hard times for us with all these inflations and all these times, but that's what we've been doing for a living. And I've been in business as a Ramon at least three, three years. We've been doing this for life. So like, um, we want to keep doing it. Uh, when we take this, this, uh, this business what was before, we facing like, uh, the town was not really happy with it, with the business was before. There was a couple issues about the liquor license and things like that. So as soon as we start working in the location, um, we start cleaning our bad reputation. And so far, we don't have issues as you can see it. We've been working a lot of taking care of what the rules saying over serve or like checking IDs and all the stuffs. I think we have an issue about, uh, we, we don't do the right thing to check the ID. But after that, we've been working a lot on that stuff. So like I say, well, I'm Antonio. I've been doing this for life. I'm a, I've been this with Ramon. Ramon is opening another business. We're trying to grow up in the community or in the state, but that's what we've been doing.
Right.
And we're happy for you guys to prove it. We thank you for you guys. And the community has been responding to us really nice.
Jose? Any questions for Jose while we have him?
Just, so Ramon is transferring the license to you. That's really, and you've been running the restaurant for the last two or three years, correct?
Right. Yes.
It seems very simple. It just.
Right. Just want to do the right, right.
So you're the same management? You're the same?
The same thing. Menu stay the same. Everybody stay in the same position. So we're doing what we're doing. Just the questions that we hear, I know probably is not what we're here for, but um, the patios, are we open to open the patio this year or?
Outside dining, you mean? Outside dining?
Outside dining, yeah. I don't know.
But I think if, if.
The question is because I have another business in Massachusetts. Massachusetts offered already the business like an option. If you guys want to do it, you just apply, get a permit. And I don't know Rhode Island where, what is.
Susan, I'm not sure he heard everything that you said because your mic is so far away from you.
Yeah. So, so the state extended the ability to have outdoor events to April of '23. They extended it another year. So if they are otherwise eligible, and I assume they are, if they've had it in the past, they would be able to do it again in the future.
We have that permitting program, as you will recall, we have the permitting program for the outdoor service. Um, the state allows it. We do a permitting process so that we can verify the life safety code issues, make sure that the cars are not going to be going anywhere near where the outdoor seating is, all that type of safety issues.
We did it like for two years. So we kind of, what you guys required me to block the, the entrances and so what we asking for, because people was really happy in summer, but we, they've been asking and say, well, we, right now, we don't know until we were through to the application. So the permits, yeah. But if it does the case, I mean, we can stop to the, get an application or apply for.
So all they have to do is come in and apply for an outdoor permit through you?
We'll have to look and see what the ordinance went through. I thought there was a sunset date on it, but we're going to have to go back and check and then reinstitute the program if we're still able to do that.
Right. And, and my guess is we will be reinstituting it based on the state law.
Okay. All right. So we still got time. So you go through that.
Plenty of time. Yeah.
Yep. All right.
And I just had a question. Um, I noticed the certificate of insurance is on here. Is that a document that you just didn't receive?
Yes.
I thought that was.
Standard, it's one of the standard contingencies that we put down.
Oh, so we may have received it. It's just on here.
We may have received it already, but it's part of the standard contingencies, like the fire code issues, the claims by creditors, certificate of good standing.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
We'll make sure you have everything in place before we issue that license.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. So at this time, we'll sort of open it up to anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this matter. And if you do, just identify yourself and we'll try to limit it to five minutes. Seeing no one, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on seven B?
Motion to approve item seven B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful night.
That's going to bring us to communications, eight E, resolutions adopted February 7, 2022 by the Barrington Town Council relative to enabling residential solar to better contribute to the state's renewable electricity goals, requesting legislation to create the Rhode Island's broadband development program. A receipt placed on file in the town council for the directs.
So I'll make a motion to refer the resolution regarding solar, residential solar, to the Sustainability Committee and the resolution regarding broadband, broadband, that we just placed that one on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. That brings us to eight F, which is a letter dated March 2, 2022, from David Flanders, chairman, uh, conveying the Conservation Commission's request the town's plastic reduction ordinance be amended to include 50 milliliter miniature plastic alcohol bottles. It's received, placed on file in the town council for the directs. We had David here earlier. He did acknowledge that someone else from the Conservation Commission was here, so we'll allow you to come up and speak on this.
Yeah. My name's Matt Bradywood. I'm on the Conservation Commission with David. Unfortunately, I wish that he could be up here speaking. Um, he's the one that wrote this letter. Uh, but it was conveying uh, something that we had voted on in the concom in our last meeting. Uh, we discussed it in our uh, March and February meetings. Uh, the plastic bag ordinance that is in place was written in a way that allowed us to amend it and add plastic bottles or, or change it to incorporate things such as this. Um, so we voted, we were hoping to uh, put the ball into. Um, so we voted, we were hoping to, uh, put the ball into the Town Council's court to, uh, take whatever steps, uh, are necessary to move forward with that. I'm not sure if the letter needs to be read or, I mean, you, I assume you all have a copy of it. Um, what I would encourage, uh, anyone who's here who would like to hear more about it, uh, we have a representative, Bill McCusker, here from the Friends of the Saga Tucket, and he's got some compelling images of the NIPS that have been picked up just in the past few months in South Kingstown, uh, sort of states the magnitude of what we feel the problem is. So, yeah, this is just early stages for hoping to move forward with incorporating language into the, into the existing plastic bag ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a statement. So I think, um, I'd like to hear some more about the economic impact of this. Um, I fully understand, uh, the Conservation Commission's position and agree with it on its face, right? But we have to understand the implications.
Absolutely.
So I would make the motion that we refer this letter to the Economic Development Committee for them to come back with their recommendation to us.
Yep, and obviously this issue has social and economic and other layers to it. Uh, we were advised by, by our, uh, by the member of the planning board that sits on our committee, um, commission, excuse me, uh, that he was, he wanted us just to be addressing the environmental impacts of it. So obviously, we're, we'll be playing that role in the larger discussion when that happens.
Right.
But, yeah.
Yes, one piece of the puzzle, right? So we need to put all the pieces together in order to make the best-
Absolutely.
-decision we can.
Yep.
Dave's not here, but if he was here, I would say that I really appreciated the information that he shared in the letter and I would encourage you to submit that as a letter to the editor, cause it is very educational. I too am frustrated by the NIPS. I wa, I ran this morning down the end of my street. There are five nip bottles i, on the corner. It, I, I, it's not a busy street, so it's somebody who lives in my neighborhood, so just throwing them out. It's very frustrating and I think not knowing that they're not recyclable might potentially change consumer behavior. Maybe people wouldn't buy them to take on golf outings, whatever people do, why they have them. But I do recommend that you put that letter to the editor and so that people start to make better choices potentially.
Yep.
But I do, I do agree that we need to, you know, look further into this because it, they are gross litter in our town.
Sure, and this was prior to discussing it further at the Concom's meetings. It was something that I had seen around town the way you have.
Yeah.
Uh, but I did not realize the scale of it. And again, Bill, uh, I think during the comment, public comment section is going to expand on that further. But, uh, it's really the scale of it that warrant, that, that we feel warrants-
Action.
Adding this, uh, this language to the ordinance. If it was, um, it, there's obviously a lot of trash that gets thrown out of vehicles and things like that. But this one really is represented around this town, um, in high numbers. So, yeah, I, I encourage people to listen to what Bill has to say on it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion? A second?
I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
I, I would just say, I'm also interested in the social aspect of this. I mean, there's the economic, there's, uh, obviously the environmental, but how much of nip consumption is contributing to drunk driving? Um, seems like an important consideration, if, if there's statistics on that.
All right, anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. It's gonna bring us to eight G, which is an email dated March four, twenty-twenty-two from Cattery Collins concerning the school resource officer program. Is Cattery here? Wanna speak on this a little? Cattery, sorry.
She's not here tonight.
All right, do we have a motion?
So-
Or Terry, you wanna talk on this item a little bit?
Uh, certainly. As I mentioned in the work session, I was in communication with Ms. Collins. I did provide her with a copy of the MOU between the school department and the, um, police department that is currently being, that's in place. Uh, it ran from twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-one. In the meantime, there has been another proposed MOU that is in the, in the pipeline, but has not been, um, authorized and fully established yet. But, um, she acknowledged receipt of the, of the, uh, copy of the MOU and thanked, thanked us, um, in terms of the other item on the communication with regard to a specific incident with the school resource officer. At this time, we, we, uh, it's still in the investigative stage up at the Attorney General's office. There's nothing the town can comment on at this point.
Terry?
Just a question. I, I think, I think when I talked to you about this a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the funding of the school resource officer. And is that a, a, a funding item in the school budget, or is that in our budget?
There's actually, um, the, the high school level school resource officer is fully funded, I believe, and Joel can correct me if I'm wrong, um, in the town budget. And then the Curtis Corner, um, resource officer is fif, funded fifty-fifty between the town and the school department.
What you gonna write?
That is correct. So we pay out of our budget for the high school resource officer, excuse me, and we split, uh, cost of the, um, middle school resource officer fifty-fifty. And that is also, I believe, in the MOU that, um, is in the pipeline to get signed.
Thank you.
All right, do I hear a motion on this item?
Motion to, um, place item eight G on file.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. That brings us to eight H, which is an email dated March eight, twenty-twenty-two from William Boardman requesting congratulations for Sophia Boardman for being the first female to obtain the Eagle Scout Award.
I make a motion to accept this communication and that we draft a letter, uh, resolution, uh, commemorating this great achievement.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
And we invite Sophia to come, no discussion.
Sure.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. That's gonna bring us to eight I, which is a resolution adopted March seventh, twenty-twenty-two by the Middletown Town Council in support of ARPA proposals for municipal learning centers, contain in Article One, Section sixteen of the Governor's proposed budget.
Motion to place eight I on file.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. That brings us to eight J, which is a resolution adopted March seventh, twenty-twenty-two by the Woonsocket City Council in opposition to Senate Bill S. two-two-four-four and House Bill H. seven-one-nine-eight entitled in an act relating to labor and labor relations, municipal employees' arbitration. Terry, if you wanna speak on that one a little bit?
Sure, so, um, the city of Woonsocket had, is in opposition to this particular legislation. Uh, the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns, who represent most of the communities in the state, also, um, provided testimony expressing opposition to this legislation as it removes the authority of the town bodies to be able to authorize, um, contractual agreements with, um, uh, the labor, um, and employee unions within their own towns, thus removing a whole piece of the budgeting, um, process and authority from the town councils. And, um, I'm of the opinion that, uh, South Kingstown should also oppose this legislation.
Thank you, Terry. Any motion on this item?
Motion, uh, that we, uh, draft, um, a resolution similar to the one passed by Woonsocket City Council. Or endorse it.
Second.
Quick motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. It's gonna bring us to item nine, which is comments from interested citizens. I invite you to come up and speak on any matter you'd like, but, uh, just first identify yourself and, uh, we'd like to keep it to a maximum of five minutes, just to keep opportunity, allow opportunity for everyone else to speak, so.
Good evening, I'm Bill McCusker. I'm president of the new, uh, nonprofit Friends of the Saga Tucket. Um, I, as Matt was talking about, that, uh, we have started a, uh, a nip study, I would say, for our town and it really bloomed into the whole state. But I have two pictures, and because we're a new group, we don't have a lot of money, so we only made two photocopies, so you're gonna have to share. So these pictures were taken today. We started collecting NIPS back in, uh, December and if I was smart about it, I would have done it before the leaves fell. And, um, we picked wintertime, which is probably not ideal to be doing things like that. Days are shorter, snow on the ground. But anyway, in three months, we, with ten volunteers in South Kingstown, we collected seven thousand nine hundred and six NIPS throughout the town, from West Kingston to Green Hill to Middle Bridge, everywhere in between. Um, those pictures are just out of, from South Kingstown. Our group expanded to doing a statewide study, but basically tonight, we just, I wanted to show you what's on the ground at South Kingstown. Um, I know that we're looking at what's going on at the State House. Um, we're fortunate, South Kingstown, we have representatives in, on the Environmental Committee who is pushing hard for this. I don't know if this is, anything's gonna be settled before the legislative session runs out, but I think this is something we need to address and we can't wait till next year. NIPS are everywhere. Before we came out of here, and I lived off Commodore Perry Highway, there were four, six NIPS by my driveway. And they just happened by the time I got home this afternoon from my collections. I picked up four hundred and ninety-five NIPS between yesterday and today, between South County Trail and Rocking Around Peace Dale. This is a problem. Um, this is the most common thing that we find in the river. Out of anything else, it's the most common abundant item that we find in the river. We have liquor stores in town that are near, in our watershed and near our waterways and a lot of people don't even wait until they get out of their parking lot to consume NIPS and they end up down there. There's a lowdown between the, uh, the, uh, above the, uh, the muse heading towards the dam that we noticed last fall. There's over two hundred NIPS stuck in there. These things make their way out in the water. They're, they're, they, from Saga Tucket River, they go to Pointe de Pont out into the ocean. It's been said that even striped bass try to hit the fireball NIPS because they're red, they break down. It just, it, it's a bad scenario. In Massachusetts, there's at least four or five communities that either ban NIPS or, or going to ban NIPS by the summer or the spring. And, um, you know, we need to start here. If we wait for the state, I don't know where we're gonna, where it's gonna be. We started town by time to do the plastic bag ban. Now the state's really considering it, so we need to take an effort. We need to be leaders in South Kingstown. So that's my public comment. I think I made it less than five minutes. Any questions? And if anybody wants to come count NIPS at my house, all those NIPS are still in my property, in my possession. So, uh, come on over.
So if you can just speak to the fact that they're not recyclable, right? So I just wanna get that-
Yeah, so absolutely, in Rhode Island, they're not reci, recyclable. Uh, in other states, they are, because we have the MRF, the material recycling facility. And because anything that's less than two by two inches can't make it through the MRF system, so they have to go in the trash. Now, I'm trying to make a, uh, a, I'm reaching out to Resource Recovery and I recovered eighteen thousand NIPS through the state of Rhode Island. Again, from Woonsocket to Westerly, from, you know, everywhere, actually Warwick to Westerly, from, you know, Narragansett, everywhere. I'm trying to see if I can bring that to Resource Recovery. So because they've already been separated, they may not have to, uh, go in the garbage. They may be able to go with the plastics. But, uh, you know, that was a big, ten, ten volunteers, three months, it was a lot of effort, but, you know, not everybody's gonna do that. And it's, you know, if you remember in, um, Fantasia, when Mickey was trying to, uh, shovel the water out as the brooms were throwing it back in, that's the way we feel. There's so many more NIPS being tossed every day. We can't keep up with it. We as a community gotta make a better effort with litter and, and, and how it's handled in our town. So, uh, you know, I have a good relationship with the rec department with this town when we do litter cleanups, but it's getting out of hand and we're almost way statewide and New England way behind the eight ball on us, so.
I just wanna say thank you for your efforts, first of all, and, uh, as you've heard us comment before, Will, we are forwarding this matter to try to get as much information as we can.
Absolutely.
Only understand the magnitude of the, of the problem and thank you again for your efforts.
And thank you, and we'll come back to give you the environmental, uh, impact as you hear other evidence.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. We appreciate your work and we appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Feel free to come on up, just first identify yourself. All right, so you know anyone wanting, wanting to come up? That brings us to the town manager's report.
Uh, good evening. The first item I will start with is the communication related to the, um, resolution on, uh, legislation prohibiting single-family zoning, which Councilwoman Bergner asked for an update on. That was, um, referred to the planning board and was on the planning board agenda at their March eighth meeting. I do not yet have a report out on that, but, um, the planning board did take it under consideration, um, at that meeting last week.
I thought we were gonna get a letter written, though. Did, did, do we not direct it correctly? Cause I thought we switched it to the planning staff, that they were gonna write a letter in?
I, I'm sorry, I don't, you don't, off the top of my head, I don't recall that conversation. It was referred to the planning staff. They did place it on the, um, meeting agenda for the planning board to, to discuss. I don't have any, um, report out yet on that particular meeting.
So the reason why I wanted to bring it back up is because I've seen other, Warwick, Johnston, is all writing in opposition to this. I mean, I, I, I feel like it goes against home rule, our, our ability as a community to decide what's best for our community. So I was looking for a letter to, I just wanna follow up to why I need to write a letter to, to, to get on the agenda, to get a letter from the staff that we vote on. I mean, I just don't want it to get stuck, because this legislation seems to be moving along in the senate side. I know that the house side is sort of held for further study, but I would, I would like to- People are confused about the legislation. It's basically you're not gonna build a single family home in a community that has a population of over twenty thousand, which is a lot of communities in Rhode Island, so.
Let me go back and get information from what transpired at the planning board meeting and then we, I can certainly report out in my interim report to the, to the council.
Thank you.
Uh, a few other items of note. Um, there will be, uh, item H on my, uh, report, notes that the planning department will be holding up a public hearing, um, on Matunik Beach Road condominiums and that is on, uh, March twenty-fourth, um, and it will be held in the, in the council chambers. So just wanna make the council aware of that. Um, also, item J, which is a memorandum from the finance director, uh, related to the, the bond sale, which is for the, uh, funding of, uh, the municipal projects, capital projects that the council had approved. And it, it was in the amount of seven and a half million dollars. Six and a half million was from municipal projects and funded through the bond sales. One million is the bond, uh, funding for the Neighborhood Guild project, which will be, um, paid for out of the guild, um, uh, fund balance. So that will not be paid out of, out of tax dollars, but I wanted the council to be aware of that. Um, a couple of other things that are not on my report. March twenty-first, as a reminder, is the preliminary budget adoption date. That's next Monday. Um, March twenty-eighth, I, I had, um, had another email sent to the council in terms of a public information session on the proposed EMS, um, facility. And, um, if there are no objections, that will be on the twenty-eighth, uh, at six P.M. in the council chambers. Just a, uh, note about the Matunik Seawall project. There is a posting on the town website that, the second phase of that is underway for anyone who hasn't been down that way. Um, they are driving sheet pile and, um, John Shock has, uh, posted a notice on that, so there is, you know, activity going on. It will not continue after Memorial Day. Um, they are proposing to get to a certain point, stop for the summer season and then come back and do the, I think it's the concrete cap system of, of the wall, but that's ongoing, um, now. And, um, I just wanted to make note that this will be Chief Ewing Chow's last official town council meeting and I wanted to extend, um, first of all, my personal thanks and congratulations to the chief, um, for his, his great leadership and service over twenty-six years of, um, his career here in South Kingstown.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, members of the council. Thank you, citizens, well, the few that are here. It's been a great career. I've been honored. Um, it's been, uh, I've met a lot of friends. Uh, we've worked well together as a team for the town. We've come a long way in the last few years especially, I think, and I'm leaving the police department in really good hands and we've done a lot. So I wanna say thank you and thank you for the support.
Thank you, chief. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service. We're gonna miss you, you've done a great job.
I'll see you guys around town.
March twenty-fifth is Chief Ewing Chow's final day, so he's, he's still got a little, few days with us anyway. And unless the council has any questions?
Any questions for the manager?
So last Friday was Zach's last official day, but I just was curious, I'm, first of all, I'm very grateful that he's gonna help us, you know, give us extra time, even though he may be working in his other capacity. I just was curious, like, will he be coming to the meetings, or is he working on a part-time basis, helping out? I mean, I'm thankful, Zach, wherever you are, with your feet up.
We are very, we're very grateful that we still have Zach to guide us in terms of the finance and the budget process. He will, he is still actively employed for a, a very limited number of hours per week and will be in an advisory capacity. We, I have appointed the Deputy Finance Director as interim director of finance during this time, while the town is, has posted the position, but Zach will be in an advisory capacity, and I will be in, have been already, in regular communication with him, as he is still very much involved with, with the budget process.
We probably have to have a recognition for both him and the chief at the twenty-eighth meeting. Just saying, I don't know, I don't know how people escape it without a thank you.
Well, that's good, because I did want, I didn't know if he, I knew he was going to help a little bit, I didn't know if it was formalized.
It, it is formalized, we do have an agreement, and he will continue to be in an advisory role and assisting through the budget process, and as long as we need him.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But Terry, to be clear, he won't be present at the meeting on the twenty-fourth.
He will not be present. I, I didn't hear what you said.
I was joking.
No, he will not be present at the meeting, but...
I was just joking.
Rose will.
Rose will.
Thank you, Terry. That's gonna bring us to the Town Solicitors' Report.
So as you're aware, things have been moving along well with a potential candidate for town manager, to the point that we've basically agreed on a contract, which I have shared with you, as you know. What I'm going to suggest is that you place on the agenda for next Monday, the twenty-first, in item for the announcement, appointment of a new town management, manager, and approval of an employment contract.
Thank you, Mike.
So is that not gonna be, that won't be an executive session?
It'll be public.
That'll be a public session?
Yes, it, it has to be, actually.
Right. I didn't know if we were gonna meet in private and then reconvene, or...
I, the, it's very interesting that between the appointment of the last town manager and now this new one, three and a half years later, the Attorney General has actually had the occasion to rule on this topic, it has to be in public.
No problem.
And Susan, it would be my preference if that item was before the preliminary budget item, if we could, as long as everyone's on the same...
Right, so do you, that's important, do you want to start that meeting at seven, or do you want to start it earlier?
What's the normal time we start? Is it seven or six-thirty for the preliminary budget adoption meeting? It's only one item, but this one will have two items. I think it makes sense to take the contract first.
You adopt the preliminary budget at a regular meeting, but because of the deadlines and where they fell, you're having to have the meeting on March twenty-first, that's the final day to adopt it.
Okay.
Normally, it's part of your regular session, so you can put it out that it would start at seven, but it felt like you wanted to...
Seven's fine.
As well. Seven.
Right, and you can certainly make this first and then go into your budget hearing second.
That would be my preference.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mike. It's gonna bring us to appointments.
Make a resolution to appoint Thomas Daniels, or reappoint him to the zoning board of review.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Make a resolution to appoint Kevin Diamond as an alternate number one to the zoning board of review.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries.
How many committees should we put on? Resolution to appoint John McGinn to the Economic Development Committee.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right, that's gonna bring us to thirteen new business, item B, which is a resolution adopting the town beach policy for the twenty-twenty-two season, as shown on Exhibit One attached here, too, and amending the town schedule fees, as further described in a memorandum from the interim director of Parks and Recreation to the interim town manager dated March three, twenty-twenty-two.
Motion to approve item thirteen B.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. It's gonna bring us to item D, which is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to South County Umpires Association of Charleston, Rhode Island, for a two-year contract for umpire services through November thirty, twenty-twenty-four, in accordance with all bid specifications, at the per-game pricing structure of seventy dollars for two officials and fifty dollars for one official, as further described in a memorandum from the interim director of Parks and Recreation to the interim town manager dated March seven, twenty-twenty-two.
Motion to approve item thirteen D.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. This is gonna bring us to thirteen E, which is a resolution authorizing the interim town manager to execute a grant agreement with the Narragansett Bay Estuary Program on behalf of the town for stormwater-related work for the Green Hill Pond Watershed, as further described in a memorandum from Director of Public Services to the interim town manager dated March eight, twenty-twenty-two.
Motion to approve item thirteen E.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. It's gonna bring us to thirteen F, which is a resolution extending the town's declaration of emergency, adopted at an emergency session on March fifteenth, twenty-twenty, and subsequently renewed on a monthly basis, as shown on Exhibit Two attached here, too.
Motion to approve item thirteen F.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. It's gonna bring us to thirteen G, which is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Connecticut Controls Corporation of Centerbrook, Connecticut, for the furnishing, installation, and upgrading of the building management system in variable-speed drives, associated control wiring, as specified, in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand four hundred seventy dollars, and as further described in a memorandum from the facility superintendent to the interim town manager dated March ten, twenty-twenty-two.
Motion to approve item thirteen G.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. It's gonna bring us to thirteen H, which is a resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise for order of notice of public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the zone map and zoning ordinance relating to property located at Seventy, Kenyon Avenue, also known as Assessor's Plot sixty-four dash one, Lot one twenty-two. The proposed amendments would, one, change the designation of the property on the zoning map from government and institution with conditions to government and institution without conditions, and, two, amend the zoning ordinance, Article Six, overlay zones, special zones, and special management districts, Section six oh three, government and institutional zone, Section six oh three point two, healthcare institution, as shown on Exhibit Three attached here, too, application by South County Hospital of Kenyon Avenue, Wakefield, Rhode Island.
Motion to approve item thirteen H.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
That'll bring us to the end, we have a motion to adjourn, and a second, any discussion? Share is pretty early. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes, and that brings us to the end. Thank you, everybody.